Everyone, especially even our community that's washing, watching could see the questioning. Is there, I mean, I think we've, you've answered.
You know, good questioning and lots of different opinions make for better decisions.
Absolutely.
So it's a healthy process. It really is.
We're completely open to any question.
If there is more interest in that specific topic, though, we would be more than happy to come back to a private meeting and give you very detailed, in-depth information on that if that's helpful for members of the board.
Well, and as Bob requested in a, in a roundabout way, maybe we do need to come and have an actual sit-down workshop, where we throw the plans on the table and explain every space, the way that we've designed it, and vet it with you, so that you're happy and that you can defend it as well.
I, I, I think that's, to me, that's the key. I mean, you know, like, like I said, I got to see certain bits and pieces of Farmington. And, and I, I got to see the sports facility of Ben Lomond. I didn't get to see the rest of this. I wasn't involved in the rest of the discussions. And, and, you know, I think, I think, as the superintendent said, I think these are questions that we have to have. You know, it's not that anybody wants to derail anything. I think it's, I think it's the matter of, let's get it clear on our minds. Let's make sure that we know what we're, you know, what the constituents, the questions we're getting. Because if I go, if I go talk to some of my area, they don't understand
Sure.
the concept. You know, and, you know, but maybe area that has a lot of young children and things, because I live in more of an area that doesn't have a lot of kids, and maybe they'll understand it, you know, and, 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 and a couple of us haven't had the ability to be involved in the discussions or, you know, even this discussion about security. And I understand that you don't want to share those things. My question, though, is how do we do that? How do we, you know, the only way I can see it is you have a, a work meeting with this as an item, a special meeting as this as an item, and that way, it's a discussion. But I don't know how you get to the private point of just security.
As far as the security stuff, it would have to, and I think a few of us already know enough about the security. You can't have a, we can't have a private meeting. I mean, if all seven of us are there, it cannot be, I, correct me if I'm wrong.
I think you could discuss security in a closed meeting, right?
Oh.
In a closed session?
Okay.
Yeah, because, like in an executive session.
Like in an executive session?
Correct.
Look at, look at it if you can. I think everybody understands why.
Under liability? Under what, under which category?
Well, I would want to do the other portion in the public setting and then move into executive.
I'm gonna look it up. Hold on.
The safety and security of it. Scott, Brian, since you're not here and I can't see you right this second, I, I mean, I think this is a meeting that we all, seven of us, need to be too. Oh.
Um, yeah, so securities is listed with the law, so we could just do it under the security. Hold on. Go ahead, Melissa, I'm sorry.
No, that's all I was just gonna say. Are we, um, is that something, Bob at your suggestion, or is the, is the rest of the board? We're, there's seven of us here.
You know, I, I, I think there's been some great questions. I think there's some other questions that people want to ask. And, and yes, you know, to Alan's point, we've only been on this topic for two and a half hours, you know, and so, and, and, and there's still other questions. There's questions about security. There's those type of things. And so, you know, are we better off if we have a work meeting or a special meeting, or, I don't know, Superintendent, the language, you know, I'm too new to the board, but do, is, are we better off having that type of a meeting so that we can just vet this out? Because I understand the timeframe. I understand the importance of the timeframe. You guys helped me with that when we was up there. And, and, you know, seeing it did alleviate some of my concerns. It hasn't alleviated all of my concerns, you know. I, I understand the purpose of it, and like I said, I, you know, if, if we were buying in, or if we were going all that direction, I could see that. But, but I think there's enough questions that, if there's a way of setting that up so that we can have that discussion, have a final round of questions, or whatever we need to do, have the talk about security in more of a private situation, I think that would be beneficial to all.
We're willing to do anything.
Happy to do it.
Remember when you joked two and a half hours ago that we could stand here for three hours?
It's getting close, guys, it's getting close.
If there is a time that you guys are thinking of meeting on security, that would be one thing that would be good, because we do need to get our consultant here. It's gonna be important that he be a part of that meeting.
And he's currently scheduled to be here as part of our process. I think it was June twenty-third.
But we would want to have the, that first meeting that Bob was talking about and vetting each of the spaces.
Yeah.
We would want to have that as soon as possible.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, two different topics there, really.
Yep.
Our people, should we put it on the, is this, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm new at this. So would we go on the next agenda and look at, sometimes we get criticized for having too long of a meeting or too short of a meeting, or
You can make a motion, though, to, to schedule another meeting.
Or too many meetings.
Or too, well, or too many, and that's why I'm like, I would, as board members, I guess, is this a voting thing if we just say, can it be, put on the next agenda? Is everyone, that's in two weeks?
Melissa?
Is that, yes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Just because we had our agenda meeting this morning and that meeting is already pretty full. Um, and then just so you guys know, we don't have a work session in May because we have graduation. We, May is like Christmas, right?
Absolutely.
Um, June, we have our budget meeting for our work session in June, right, Lark?
We have two board meetings in June. You're saying that the security consultant is available on June twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
That, so that my, my thought is, Melissa, is could we talk about this at our next agenda meeting and not add it to our May eleventh, but possibly June?
Well, no, because they need this meeting as soon as possible. And that other meeting, really, like, some of those policies for that agenda meeting for May eleventh wasn't that full. Was it?
I thought it was.
You certainly could on May eleventh, especially if we stayed off of a lot of other items on executive. You could handle that in executive. And what you might do for these gentlemen is just flip-flop your executive session on that meeting so that they can come and do that and not wait till the nine or ten o'clock.
Or do you want to have another meeting between now and two weeks?
Wait, I just want to make sure. Didn't you say the security guy wasn't available till June twenty-third?
Talking about two different. So there's two things. There's the security meeting and June twenty-third our schedule doesn't get affected by that. We can do that when it works for you. The discussion about this whole collaboration, that one needs to happen as soon as possible.
Right, and that's why, but I think that's gonna be a long conversation, and that's why I don't want to include it on the same night as a board meeting.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, I see what you're saying.
May seventeenth through the nineteenth is another option, too, but we can always talk to him and just make sure that we.
But those are two very different conversations.
Right. Does everybody on the board want to be part of this, like, vetting at all the collaboration spaces, or there's, you know, three or four of us that are comfortable with it, and then maybe just Bob and Scott, and I don't, is that an option, too?
What's your comment?
Who said no?
I'm available whenever.
Scott? Brian?
I would be available most evenings. It would depend on the evening.
So who else on this, on the board wants to do a separate meeting to go through that vetting process?
We prefer the more board members, the, the better.
Okay, so do you want us all there? We will all be there. Seventeenth through the nineteenth, you said. So our next board meeting is May eleventh.
If, if one of the goals is to get on the same page, then we would want everybody to be there.
Okay, so what about either the first week of May? Is it all the board members looking at their calendars? Are we allowed to do this in a meeting? I guess this is the public thing. I'm just sorry, you guys. This is, this is a work session, right? Hey, I just want to remind people.
While you're doing that, really quickly, just remember the schedule conversation we had. We can work with whatever you need. Just know that that gets tacked on to the end of when school opens. So if we wait for two weeks or a month, those two weeks or a month
Yeah.
push out the rest of that stuff.
Well, if we did it next week, it'd just be one week.
What about May third?
Tomorrow, we can do it in a week. We're just saying, just keep that in your mind.
Uh, Scott, Brian. I know that you are a little busy this week.
What about the twenty-ninth, Thursday?
Nah, I don't think so.
Anybody? Nope, okay.
This week, you're talking? I'm sorry, I'm not following.
Yeah, we're just looking for dates. I need you to throw out some dates.
Yeah, I can't do anything this week.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. What about?
Probably the earliest would be, um, May sixth.
That's what I was gonna say. Thursday, May sixth.
In the evening?
In the evening.
We can make that work if that works for you.
Does everyone check their calendars? It's a Thursday night. Alan? Okay, well. We're building a school. We're building a school, Alan.
That's right.
Okay, Bob, May eleventh, I mean, May sixth?
May sixth.
May sixth, I'm good.
What time? What time can you guys get home from work?
You guys tell us.
Scott, Brian, you come in from Salt Lake, what time?
Six, six-thirty.
Six. Six? Okay, so that means it is a board meeting, so we'll need to get it posted.
It'll say special board meeting, work session.
Okay.
And it'll have this, just one item, I'm assuming?
One item, one item.
Now, was six P M. or six-thirty?
Let's do six.
Six, perfect. Six to ten, how's that? And we're just blocking it out. We're just blocking it out.
In that meeting, would you guys mind if we sat down? Would that be okay?
Yes, you know, we, um,
Maybe we don't need to do that one on Facebook Live because we'll be vetting and going through everything, so could we use a conference room for that?
Oh, for Merker, we'll check to see if they're available. Conference room is probably a little too close, depending on how many of you come.
Yeah, sorry, I meant one of the big training rooms, yeah. And then that way, we could have, like, our own tables and we could sit down and look and make notes and stuff.
Okay, that sounds great.
Merker is available.
Melissa? Merker, it's in the Merker room?
One more time.
Scott?
See if I can get your attention.
Sorry.
Hey, just a question. Would it be possible, or a suggestion, that we could do the, that executive session on security for the first hour of that meeting, so that we cover everything in one shot?
We can.
I don't even think it would take an hour.
No, the, the difference is, I, I, I mean, we've done this a hundred times. The difference is, the consultant that is that, that specialist, if you want to meet him in person and to have him go through that, that's when he'd be out here, but we've done this over and over and over again. We're happy to go through those details with you in person in that meeting if you want.
And it could also be a second meeting if we can get down.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
And what we'll do in between tomorrow morning and that, that evening is that we'll, we'll forward these plans, the four sheets of plans, to Ian and Michael, and then they can give those to you guys.
Didn't you already forward them to me?
You already have them.
We'll give you the most up-to-date plans tomorrow. They're only slightly modified from that, but we'll send those to you, and you guys look at them and come up with all of the questions that you want to ask.
Yeah, and I think I sent, oh, I think I sent those out recently, you guys. Um, Ian or Michael, one of you guys sent?
Was that thirteenth of April meeting?
Yes.
That it was sent to you?
I believe so. So check your, I'll resend them unless they're different from that. Okay, so send them, send them to me again, and then I'll send them again. Okay. Scott, sorry, I saw a hand going up. Was that you? Scott, Brian, okay. Okay, May sixth. Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay. Terry, can you talk fast? Um, we're gonna move on to three point two, T S C D, to our travel policy and procedure. Believe this is tweaking some procedures.
Okay, so, yeah, what you will have in front of you here shortly is some of the research that we found in regard to uh, the travel procedure that we put out, given the situation that we had.
Thank you.
So if I could take a second and explain that, this is information from the state travel office, which we have used in the past. Uh, generally, they add a little bit to any particular flight or hotel room, things like that, generally in the amount of about twenty-five dollars. Um, so if you take the first sheet, as, as you look at what is the first column where it says city pair unrestricted fare for Delta, now, keep in mind that they, they contract with two airfare companies, right? Delta and Alaska. Alaska has like four options of cities that they go to. Delta has like four pages. So as you see, that the, where it says one-way contracted price, and we, we just, as a smattery, went through some of the cities that normally host conventions, things like that. So as you look at the one-way contracted price for Delta, that would be seven hundred and sixteen dollars for Atlanta, Georgia, uh, nineteen hundred and ninety-six if it was refundable. But if you were to go out to the very far left in the margin, where it says your own round trip is, uh, to, to purchase it without, uh, insurance, et cetera, would be five hundred and fifty-six. So as you'll see at the very top, Delta does offer full refunds, credit for one year, changeable. The right column is a different rate that they put out, which you would have to book early, and basically what that is, is the, the farther they get into booking, the, the rate goes up, because they're just trying to fill seats. Okay, so that gives you some information to take a look at there. Um, like, three more pages behind there is Alaska Air. It has like, what, six cities, same thing, no advance purchase, refundable, changeable without penalty. What you see behind there is, um, our procedure that we put out. And if we need to, we can make any changes to that based on the information that we have. Um, and then Christopherson Travel Agency is the agency that is used under contract for state travel. Um, so I, I put that before you. If you have any questions, um, it does seem a little bit more feasible if you're looking at the totality of it to go more with the state travel office. Now, you just have to be comfortable with the difference in price. So if you're comfortable, comfortable with that difference in price, then it makes sense because you, it is refundable, changeable, things like that. Uh, that situation might be alleviated going forward with having those options. It's just a matter of saying that, okay, let's, I'll use the state travel office, therefore, everything is changeable. Um, so do you have any thoughts or direction or questions that I can answer?
One question. Let me turn on my mic again.
And it's gonna be equipment.
Sure.
I promise. Some, and I understand this is for employees, but, uh, some of our C T S Os and things, they deal with a state bid, but not through Christopherson. And that's still appropriate? Because it's the, it's our employees that are making these arrangements.
Well, that, that's.
For, for students and for themselves.
Right. It could be. That, that's why I say, if, if that's, they're, we want to go, then we need to change the procedure.
Well, and I, and I can only speak, just as, as an example, F F A. F F A usually has a different travel agency as far as a state group traveling than Christopherson's. Which they either get a better, I, I assume it's because they get a better, a little bit better break, or they get a better option of what they're doing, or whatever.
Right.
And so I don't know what that means as far as this policy. Is that, is that going to be allowable? Is it not going to be allowable?
Bob, let me, I just want to jump, just an illustration. So the trip to Atlanta, it's interesting, if it's non-refundable, it's five fifty-six. If it's a refundable, it's nineteen hundred bucks, which I would tell you that, I mean, my concern is, yes, I want wherever possible, if it's close, to go with a refundable ticket and they, in case things change. But if that particular one changed, and, um, I mean, the amount of money that you spend over to get the refundable ticket is lots more, double, almost triple, than if you would eat the cost of it going to a, so I, you know, we're concerned that we, we don't want to miss the mark and, and, and react, especially, we haven't had that kind of a situation come up. Hopefully, it's just a one-time COVID kind of a, you know, that conferences don't get switched from face-to-face to virtual, but, um, there you have it.
And maybe more, oh, sorry, Julia, go ahead.
So I don't think, I mean, I don't think we should require to be refundable every single time because the amount of money we're gonna spend, even if several of people just backed out at the last minute, we're still saving money
Sure.
on the cheaper one, because I don't think that many people back out, or I don't think that many conferences are gonna be changed in the future, depending on if we have another pandemic or something, but.
And probably more to your point, Bob, uh, I think when you go with the travel agency, whether it was for a C T S O, et cetera, you know, they're planning those, then they're, have the option to add, remove kids. You know, the kids can't go, so I'm gonna add another alternate or something like that. I, I believe those options are there, but without knowing or having contacted those individual companies, I, I couldn't say, but I think that would be a, a standard. So we certainly can tweak it to where, um, and, and, and if you want, we can come back with maybe some proposed language for the sake of time to, to maybe remove some of those barriers, but, and allow for the other travel to take place going forward.
Thing that's a part of this is, we really would like, and we're recommending that we officially, if we, if you're willing to consider that, that we give feedback to students and staff that overnight travel and, um, out-of-state travel is permitted, uh, after school. That would be June and July, which is most of, when that happens. Uh, I don't know if we have any groups going in May, but there is some question about that, and, and it's my understanding that as long as they follow whatever guidelines of the, the city that they're traveling to and returning, and they're following, you know, good health practices, that we don't need to, uh, you know, stop them from that travel. I, I don't believe. I think it's consistent with even the health order and the declaration, so.
I agree.
I think so. Um, that doesn't have to be a motion, does it?
That's what I was actually, because it's not listed as an action item. I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm comfortable with out-of-state travel. I know, um, speaking of F F A, I think they have to book or something.
They all need to start booking soon, and if it does need to be an action item, someone would have to make a motion to do it, but.
So, so here's why we did this as a procedure and not a policy.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
We're not changing.
So that it, so that we could put it into place sooner.
Yes.
Right, so this, if, if we keep it as a procedure, then it does not have to come back as a motion.
Yeah.
Therefore, you know, you give us guidance, we change the procedure. It's not a policy.
Right.
So through your procedure, then? You can, we can alleviate, I mean, help and expedite that if they've got to start registering next week or whatever it is, right?
That they'll be permitted, yeah.
Then let's leave it that way.
But you'll change the very first thing that says they have mass purchase refundable airfare, right?
So, yeah, especially once we've done the research here, we, we see that it's just not feasible.
Right.
And we needed to go through that learning experience, you know, going through the situation to be able to figure that out.
Okay.
So, yep, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, and I just want to verify that, I, I think on the, the procedures, it mentions that the change from in-person to face-to-face or virtual, and I just want to make sure that even if something, if something allows a virtual option, we could still allow people to choose the face-to-face if it meets all the other criteria, right?
Yes.
If they offer a virtual option, you automatically have to go virtual.
It's just if it's only virtual.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I had some questions from some of my groups that are traveling, and, and I, I just wanted to make sure I was telling them correctly, so.
Thank you. Okay, three point three, four-day versus five-day in-person school days per week. I just wanted to touch on this. I, um, we are, this is not an action item, this is a discussion item. And, um, as, as all of this stuff is on the agenda, so anyways, Superintendent Rogers, you're the point of contact.
We provided you some information. I'll just say that shout out to our teachers for doing an, uh, an amazing job this year. Was twelve, now it's like nineteen percent of students have had face-to-face options, and Utah's been the leader. And so, a shout out to our teachers, our association, our people that are working hard. Uh, we're glad the vaccinations came. We're glad that everybody, including our classified employees, pitched in and kept school going and extracurricular activities. I think it was good for kids. We like to see them in schools. So having said that, I also recognize that there's been a lot of discussion at different districts, publicized some of it not. It's time for us to start planning for next year. Um, master schedules are already, you know, being put together, and, um, so we wanted, you asked me to prepare some information. So rather than just providing you my opinion, which we all have opinions, and some of them are very strong, we wanted to try to stick to the data. We learned a lot of stuff through the pandemic, even about our Fridays. We know that we didn't catch all kids, and that's not anybody's fault, and we, you know, we're looking at a system. I mean, this was the first time many of us went through this. We know that our scores don't look really good. We know we have gaps. And, uh, and, and we also know that blended learning isn't just, um, designed to happen on Fridays, or Wednesdays, or Mondays, or whatever, you know, over the weekend. So we have the one-to-one devices. We're gonna continue to work on, uh, framework and blended learning and personalized learning, because that's the right thing to do for kids as we move into the future. So, uh, I did ask, and you've got two pieces of data here, and this is certainly not all. Uh, we don't have really any survey data. We have some unofficial, you know, opinions. Many of us have gotten emails with, you know, different peoples and had teachers comment. Um, I will have, uh, Dr. Ernst talk about, because we did talk about four versus five day, and the feedback we got from principals who were asked this question. So Mark, do you wanna? The other pieces that you have is, um, I mean, the reality is, we're a five-day week right now, okay? So it's kind of, you know, the four person, the four-day week that was, that would, would ever be approved by the state board would be for N E S schools only, and those schools are required to meet our requirements. So they have to do not four regular days, they have to do four longer days in order to qualify for the number of required hours. So what we're talking about is not really four-day week, but is, it's a five-day week, and do we put a digital learning day in that? It's still a five-day work week, not a four-day week like the N E S schools. So I just want to clarify that, but I asked, um, uh, Chantel, who's over blended learning, to speak a little bit about blended learning and what we're doing as we move forward, and how we're gonna utilize our one-to-one devices and our technology. And then I asked, uh, Deb to talk about our attendance and our assessment data, so that you would have a couple of data points, because obviously, you're gonna get lots of varying opinions, you know, across the board, um, whether it's students, whether it's parents, whether it's teachers, you know, you're gonna have a variety. So, Mark, do you want to talk, at least, uh, we haven't done an official survey, but we did at Leadership bring up the topic of, uh, student learning and, um, and, and the digital day.
Yeah, so, and Mr. Hammond, Mrs. Coon, if you want to step in, uh, we all report, we all spoke with our principals overwhelmingly. Um, the response we got back from area directors is that our people want to be in school five days a week. Is that correct, and Mr.?
Yes.
With one of them being the half.
Uh, well, with an, an early-out day, yes, yeah.
They want it normal.
Yeah, yeah. There, there were some conversations of, what about this, what about, about that, but the majority wanted us, uh, on the, the four with the half, like, like it was last year, so.
I appreciate the comment about normal. My only caveat is status quo versus normal. You know, this is a great opportunity for us to rethink and have good quality discussions. I know that, uh, Rick from T E A, we had a good discussion today about, um, where we go from here with blended learning and, and how we can continue to, gosh, we've talked about, um, not only, uh, five-by-five schedule, but grading and all kinds of things, and I know that's not gonna be decided tonight, but it's, you make better decisions when you have lots of voices at the table. And I, and I do appreciate, uh, Scott and those of you who brought up concerns about the building, because frankly, there's no one perfect answer, and we make better decisions when all of us are involved in discussions, so. Uh, Chantel, would you talk a little bit about blended learning, and then Deb, and then board members, whatever you want to, um, share or questions that you have?
So as we're having this discussion, the word blended learning gets used a lot, and so I think it's important that you know and understand what our district use is as blended learning. And so it's learning that comes through a mix of traditional face-to-face instructional time, along with strategic use of digital tools, and some element of student control over time, place, path, or pace. So we have some examples of what's happened on Digital Friday, so if you go to the next. So we have some examples of what's happened on Digital Friday, so if you go to the next one. Um, so like students are assigned to spend thirty minutes on some software. Maybe it's math or reading software, go ahead and go to the next one. Or there's an assignment posted in Google Classroom or Canvas, go to the next one. Or on Digital Friday that a teacher zooms in with the class and that they participate in a Zoom. So the question is, is this blended learning? And the answer is not quite. And so I think that's something to kind of pay attention to is a lot of what we were doing on Digital Friday didn't quite hit the definition of blended learning. So if we relook at the definition of blended learning, we need a piece of that traditional face to face instructional time. We need strategic use of digital instructional tools. And then there needs to be some type of control over time, place, path, or pace. So if you'll go one more slide. So the face to face instruction and strategic use of digital tools, we've done a lot of training on. And we'll continue to do professional development on that. The element of student control, this is something relatively new. And we're gonna have to really buckle down this next year and the ed techs are planned to do a lot of professional development on this particular area. So go to the next slide if you will. So if we look at those scenarios that we had before, how could we take personalized learning software and make it be blended learning? We would need to add a face to face component and we would need to add the strategic use of the tool. Meaning, we would need to tie it to what's being taught in the classroom. So maybe the class before, the class after, or during the class, we actually teach something that we're going to be doing on that personalized learning software. So we tie it to current instruction. And then we would wanna collect the data that's being from the students' responses. So that we can actually use that data in which to now refine our next lessons that we're going to be doing. So it's not just kind of an isolated go do this, it's actually incorporated into instruction. Okay, so let's look at the next slide, the assessment or assignment is assigned on Google. Now I wanna make a side note here, Canvas and Google Classroom are great management tools. So when I was in the classroom, I had a box in the back of my classroom. And as I used worksheets, I would make files and stick those worksheets into that box. So that if a student was absent, they would go grab what the worksheet they needed or if they lost it. Because they always seem to lose it, right, especially in math, that they could just go grab another one. Google Classroom and Canvas can be used as that management tool, but it can be much more than that. And that's where we get blended learning. So if we add the face to face component, so again, it's tied to something that we're teaching, so we teach a main concept. And then we post an assignment in Google Classroom. But now we add the strategic use of the tool where maybe we have them do a discussion post in Google Classroom or in Canvas. That's gonna make it more blended learning. And so that's the training that we're going to be focusing on next year, as next school year begins in this summer. Is to really start moving things towards more of a blended learning environment. And so the last piece, so this is the teacher face to face, even though it's done digitally. It would be the teacher face to face, so we need to add the strategic use of digital tools and an element of student control. So maybe here we use Google Classroom in which to assign an assignment. And then we allow them some choice in how they complete that assignment. Maybe we allow them to pick kind of the project that they're going to do in regards to the information that they're given. And so that's how we can take what we've been doing and make it more of a blended learning environment. And so if you go to the next one. I just want to make it very clear that what we did in response to COVID nineteen was actually considered remote learning. And now that we have the infrastructure in place and we have one to one devices, we have hotspots and all that other kind of stuff. We can actually now move into a blended learning environment. And blended learning can occur Monday through Friday, it doesn't need to just be at home when they're remote. The last slide. Actually blended learning should occur Monday through Friday. As we use that technology in our classrooms strategically, connected with our face to face instruction. And allowing that student to personalize through some choice. Any questions on blended learning? Okay, thank you.
I know some of you asked earlier about what we're gonna do with all these investment of these devices and blended learning and how's that? So that's, anyway, go ahead, Julie.
And so, so I, I mean, I like the idea that, and I know blended learning is where we're going. But how do we? Enforce or have the accountability of the students? To? Work on the device the way that they're supposed to in response to. I mean, it just seems like there's a big accountability piece, how, how are we gonna implement that?
That's an excellent question, one thing we are doing is we're helping build leadership capacity. In working with principals to understand what blended learning is, as we work with teachers to understand blended learning. Then we'll be incorporating some of those strategies in which to, for follow through, follow up, those kind of things. And I think that if we move it more into the classroom, what's happening Monday through Friday. A teacher as they're walking around the classroom can definitely see if a student's responding to materials or engaging using the device. Keep in mind what we did was remote learning, and so really the teachers had no control over what was happening in that home environment. And they were just hoping that the students would interact with the materials.
Chantel, would you say it's true that Canvas has some accountability tools built in? Which is part of the driving reason why we went, gosh, secondary schools, let's go to Canvas, even though some really like Google Classroom. That Google Classroom doesn't have quite the ability to track and log how often students are in. And I mean, you can submit assignments, but there's not as many accountability tools as Canvas, is that fair to say? I don't, I'm not anti-Google or.
I think both of them definitely have the benefits of doing some of those things, but Canvas just has more bells and whistles, if you will. So as they start to use those digital tools. Google Classroom has a lot of great components to it that are kind of quick and easy to understand. But as you look at Canvas, there's the ability to just move a little bit further. I know with my own daughter, it's infuriating, oh, she's gonna kill me that I just said that publicly. Not my own daughter, but somebody who may live in my household who's a high school student. Canvas, when she turns in her assignments, her teachers request that she turns them in through Canvas, and they're all marked late or missing. And so you know that conversation, going back to that management piece. Canvas helps allow some of that management at the junior high and the high school. Because now as a, as a teacher, I remember getting a lot of things saying, well, my kid turned it in and it's like, but it's not in my stack of papers. Now it's hard to lose a digital copy or that it's branded late across the thing, like it's big red letters and pretty much everything is late. Sorry Hannah, but get your work done. So I, I think that Canvas definitely has some, some benefits and some more bells and whistles. Other questions about blended learning?
I just have a question, so from the teacher perspective. Because I know this year having the Fridays as digital, right, was a day that would help teachers put their curriculum online, do assignments, whatever. How do you see that happening in the future if we go back four and a half days or five days?
So actually I see the devices being used in the classroom. And so the way we were kind of using Canvas and Google Classroom was more of a management tool. Here's the assignment, here's the materials that have been posted, because you can't come in school today to get them. So now we're just going to incorporate them more within the classroom, and it's actually possible. And a lot of the training that we're planning on doing next year with both the principals and with the teachers is going to be around how to do that effectively. How to use the different tools that we have available to us to be able to effectively utilize and engage the students digitally. We really wanna stress the strategic use of tools, just because we have a device doesn't mean we need to use it for everything. We want strategically use it for what it's going to be best.
So you're gonna teach everyone how to swim before throwing them in the deep end, is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm actually really excited about the direction we're going. And in reality, we were doing a lot of this already with our digital teaching and learning grant in some of our elementary schools. And we were starting to, to gain momentum with one to one devices with those schools that participated in the digital teaching and learning. This just accelerated our momentum, is what it did.
That's what I was gonna say, this one to one device was, I think the board meeting before the pandemic was a five year plan. And so I've had some great conversations with board members individually, like we don't wanna go backwards. This five year plan turned into a one year plan, it's so good. And I'm afraid if we, you know, that we'll go backwards. And I think, ah, but are we throwing people in? We had to throw kids and families, teachers in during COVID. But now can we teach them to swim before we throw them, you know, I mean, that's kind of anyways.
Absolutely, absolutely, and blended learning happens on a continuum. And like I said, we pretty much have been using the, the Google Classroom and Canvas as management at this point. And so now it starts to, to take those tools and use them in blended learning. So we'll do it, we're excited, the ed techs are excited, they have some silver training.
The real test is going to be, does that improve and move scores? I mean, right now we're seeing, but of course, lots of districts are seeing those gaps and those scoring issues. And not necessarily fault of teachers or parents or of kids, really. It's just kind of a perfect storm, if you will, but.
And I would just say, when you're looking at four person or four days in person or five days in person. Blended learning should not be a part of that conversation, because we can blend when they're in the classroom. So, okay, thank you.
So I was able to provide just some real general attendance and state assessment data for you. Says multi-year comparison, most specifically the comparison from last year and this year for your decision making there. Generally, we can say that our lower grades are really experiencing some negative impacts. Whether that's leftover from spring and carrying over to the school year or not is, you know, still yet to be seen. But if you go ahead and move forward. As far as attendance, there's caveats to both years, because the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty school year. Just a reminder that for fourth quarter, everyone was counted as in attendance all that fourth quarter while we were on the soft closure. So that lends itself to some skewing in that data. The twenty twenty one, this school year, I was told that on Fridays, the share everybody's counted as being there too. So there's some skewing on there, but you can see the final outcome, slightly higher absence rate this school year compared to last. But the, you know, the Fridays kind of make up for the whole fourth quarter, the amount of days in there, so. Possibly comparable, but just know that those, those are caps when you're, when you're looking at that information. Any questions on that one? That's pretty straightforward, okay. The Apple, a reminder that that's the performance, language proficiency performance that our DLI students take. They were able to take that assessment both last fall and this fall, late fall, early winter for this school year. So you can see that generally, our students scored slightly, a little bit lower this school year. And everything except the interpersonal listening, I think that, interpretive listening.
Sorry to interrupt, did you hear that? The way Apple presents that is all grades that took that one test are combined together.
That, yeah, this is district data all combined together.
Right, I know, but it makes it harder to read that way, because you can't tell if that's a third grader that's testing there or a fifth grader. So it just, it kind of.
But it's the same for both years, it's the same report for both years.
Yeah, but it, so the test is the same, so third, fifth, and seventh all take the same test. And so then it pushes all the three of those grades in the same test kind of way.
You can't count down the grade, but it is, it is a fair comparison for.
For, for year to year.
Average for me, really good.
Yeah.
Of all.
Yeah, but it is not by grade level or individual schools or language, that, it's just all thrown.
You're correct, it is all thrown together.
So that, that's for that, I wish that we had, so these are our mostly English speakers learning another language. But I wish we had our results from our WEATA tests, which is our students that English is not their first language. And how they're doing with their English proficiency, those are not yet in, expect to get those in May. So unfortunately, we don't have those. Anecdotally, we've been informed that those students are seeming to struggle. And oftentimes are not. In, involved in the Fridays or the other mentioned sometimes is that. That loss of one day, if it's only Fridays or two days in the case of like Anna Smith. Where we have a large number of students, you know, English is not their first language. So they're actually missing two days of that immersion in the environment of being in the school environment there too. So those are caveats with students learning other languages. The next couple of slides have to do with our early literacy results, our Acadience Reading Benchmark results. And this is a middle of the year to middle of the year comparison from last year, middle of the year. And we're just beginning our end of year assessment, so. And we did not have end of year assessment last, last year, so it's a fair comparison from middle of the year to middle of the year. The, when you're looking at that, like if you're looking at the kindergarten, the top lines that don't say Tooele District. That's actually the state of Utah, that's what, what the comparison is for. So the state of Utah and then our district, and again, it's just all kindergarten thrown in, it's not broken down for you by school. But you can see that for our middle of the year this year, we're lagging behind. The green, a reminder, the green and blue are considered at or above benchmark. So the percentages, the numbers and the percentages in green and blue are those students that are reaching the benchmark. And that, that data is available for you for.
But the part that's concerning is the red part, right?
The part that's concerning very much is the red.
Yeah, I mean, and I say that just like you can say last year, you know, it was this much. And then this year that red is, is bigger, so that's.
K one and two. Even more so.
K one and two were hit really hard.
Yes.
Three not, not as bad, but definitely.
And even our third is even more comparable to the state where K one and two, we're still struggling in comparison to the state. Where the state has lost some ground over all, we have done so and even more, so. Other than third, third grade, we're right up there with holding about the same. So appears to be a pretty heavy impact for our early young ones and.
We don't have rise data, so.
No, we don't have rise data, that's just beginning to funnel in. Preliminary looks of some grade levels, we have a little bit more than half of the results are in. And we're either below or right about at the same mark that we were two years ago. Not seeing anything higher than where we were two years ago with the preliminary rise data that's coming in. The next slide is also related to Acadience. And we had a presentation from our vendor that we enter our data in on this pathways of progress. And that is progress that our students are made, making compared to their like counterparts across the nation. So to be making, we, we want to be making above, typical, well above, or typical or better. So we want to be making typical or above, sorry. And you can see that our well below and below typical numbers, we would not want to see those so. In such high numbers, we want to see lower numbers on that side. Our kindergarten is especially concerning, because that last column is the two year comparison, so that's the change. And those that are scoring a typical or better progress, so this is aside from did they meet the benchmark? Whether they met the benchmark or not, how are they progressing compared to their like counterparts across the nation?
I just had a question. You said this is a comparison across the nation, not statewide?
Correct, the norms are national norms.
So most of the nation was home? I mean, so do we have any idea why, I mean, our kids are in school four days a week. Most of the rest of the states are home and we're still.
Struggling and kindergarten.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out how, what kind of variables we can attribute that to. I mean, if it was within the state, then it's a little bit, at least a little bit more understandable, but. Where, I mean, Doc, Dr. Rogers talked about how we're, you know, in the twelve percent that we're actually in school. And so, anyway, that's a little bit strange to me.
On the kindergarten, but our first grade and third grade were no change from last year. So, these are changes again on how our kids did this year.
I think, I think we've talked about, you know, kindergarten student success is based on the amount of language that. We've talked about not just focusing on our mid-year growth and our, what's called our, you know, not state growth goal.
Yeah, we do have a growth goal.
Yeah, so we have a growth goal. We've talked about that, but we really need to look at some preschool and kindergarten or prior to kindergarten interventions, whether it's read with a child for 20 minutes or, you know, and it needs to be kind of multi, you know, a, a, a pretty big push so that we can get our students up to speed before they hit kindergarten with language and, and basic academic readiness skills. It's, it's a, it's, it's probably a deficit, I would say, in our, in our county.
And, and also for our kindergarten, you know, we do have some schools where kindergarten students are only in person three, three days. And if they're half days, you know, so there's some discussion about that. We did look at our full day versus our half day. And that data came back just what you would expect, that our full day students, of course, were meeting these pathways of progress.
But we don't have, we don't have very many full day classrooms.
Yeah. And then the last slide is our ACT scores. So, our students did, were able to complete ACT last spring and before they did early March. And then we did again this March. And so, on the left there for you is the last four years, just average composite scores. We actually, in this, this is a good news slide, we actually have increased our average composite score for this, the spring from last spring and the past four years.
Although we, it's still below state averages?
Yes, we are still below state average, preliminary state average because some, some districts are still testing in this third window. We chose to test in the first window. And then on the right is just the average scores for the four subject areas from last year to this year. And those have all increased. So, the high, you know, the impact is definitely being felt, the lower, the lower grades.
So, Deb, I just want to say thank you. I know you put this together really fast and you did a, I'm shocked. Not, I know you're amazing. I just, it's a lot of information in a short amount of time. So, thank you.
It will be useful as you do some decision-making there.
And I just wanted to double check really, and I know this is kind of putting you on the spot. We did not do any surveys to ask like teachers or kind of the community members thoughts about four or five days or. I know there was an informal survey on Facebook. I just wanted to make sure something else wasn't put out.
I don't know about that one.
The, the, the district didn't do.
And, and that's okay.
They talked about surveying the principals.
But we did, we did visit with principals, told them to visit with our staff members and that, but that's where area directors responded that. But we haven't done.
And, and I know quite a few board members have been out talking to the community and talking to different people. And I know we've received a few emails. And I'm sorry, Melissa, but I'm just, can we have Rick Harrison come up and talk about what his letter was and about what teachers are saying to him? Cause now we've heard data and I was just curious about what teachers are saying as well. Cause I've heard teachers want to go back to five days. And I just want to see if that's kind of what everyone's saying. Rick, do you want to?
While Rick's coming up, I will tell you that the only other piece of data we have would be from four SBO students that we had on last Friday for a, our SBO luncheon, those four students. I don't know, Julie, if you want to mention, you know, what they, their feelings on Friday and on, on, you know, this topic.
They actually were all wanting to come back on Friday. They were, I actually did informal of a lot of students today and most of those also wanted to come back on Friday.
Could I, just before.
Yeah, please do.
Cause I, I anxiously awaiting Rick's input, but it is a bit of a challenge to, to talk about this anecdotally. Because without exception, every person that I have spoken with, whether student or teacher, has expressed a preference for remaining with the, or with the Friday digital. And so, I'm not saying that that's representative. But I am saying that it would be helpful to, I mean, principals are principals. And I'm not, I'm not bad-mouthing the principals. It also doesn't surprise me to hear the principals say what I know Scott Rogers feels strongly. No, I'm, I'm just saying, it doesn't surprise me. But I, but I would be interested to kind of get a little bit more of a widespread assessment of how our teachers and students feel. Anyway, I just wanted to say that.
And I think that really is a perfect example because almost everyone I've talked to is the other way. So, it's, it's, anecdotally, it's really tricky and.
We can agree, all agree that everyone loves three-day weekends. I mean, we all do. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, you know, what's happened on our Friday learning day and how we evaluate that is, is a different matter, but.
So, if I could just, I mean, keep in mind those architectural folks, Rick. But if I could just briefly respond to that, I'm not saying that, that none of them appreciated the value of not, you know, having to be in school. But from the teachers I have spoken with, it, it was far more about having time to do the work that they thought they weren't, hadn't been able to do on, yeah, on a five day. And, and so it wasn't.
It definitely speaks to prep and those other issues. It may not accurately reflect student learning opportunities, but it definitely speaks to the other.
That, that, and that's true as well. I did, I do have a junior high student at Grantsville Junior High started doing, I'm gonna misspeak about it, but it was something about requiring completion of the work by, yeah, X, X hour. I thought that was valuable. I mean, you know, my daughter grumbled, but she also was on task with it. So, anyway, I'll shut up. Go ahead.
But also with the student body officers, they, they thought that their, not this last time, but a couple of times ago, they thought that their quality of lessons, just anecdotally, were better this year with the Fridays off with the teachers.
Rick, can we let Scott say something too? Sorry.
Absolutely.
It's so hard to raise your hand while you're remote, just for what it's worth. You know, I think that, I, I guess my point is just a point of caution. You know, the, the reality of this is that I think Alan hit the nail on the head. That there's so many opinions and, you know, so many different voices, whether it's parents and students and teachers and, yeah, you know, that, that, that whole. At the end of the day, I, I'm not sure that as a board, we can govern by, you know, based on who, who was the loudest voice. I think, you know, I think what we have to do is, and we have that obligation to look at the good of the whole. And, and that may not necessarily be the popular voice or the one that, you know, any particular group or, you know, or school or individual likes. I think that's why there's seven of us tasked with that responsibility as a board to make those decisions. And it, I, so I, I don't know. I, I just, for what it's worth, I get a little nervous when we start to listen to any particular voice and give them any more weight than another.
Okay, so I don't want to interrupt Rick. So, Rick, sit down, sit down just for a second, okay?
I can sit down as long as you want.
No, no, don't leave, don't leave, don't leave, don't leave. I want you to talk. But I, I need to respond to a couple of things here. I think if you go and you ask, you can interpret however you want to interpret what anybody tells you. Cause I said in the student body meeting, and I understood what those four were saying. For those students, they were college students, they were released, you know, released to parent, they were internship students. The four-day week wasn't the, it doesn't matter to them. They're not there anyway, right? Now, I did hear the young lady from Grantsville say, but I think there's some of the kids that have benefited from the four-day week and from the online. So, I think we have to be fair in what we're, in, in how we interpret what they're saying. Because I, I don't think it was just a blanket statement, we all want to go back to five. The, the question I have, and, and I think it's very appropriate on Alan's part. I mean, we own, what's the survey thing? There you go. Anyway, we own that. How hard is it to send a survey to parents? How hard is it to serve, send a survey to teachers or, and even students? I mean, we pride ourselves on data. We pride ourselves on what we want to know until we don't want to know what they really want or saying. I mean, I, and Lord knows, I don't know how Facebook works, okay? Anybody that follows what I do knows I don't know how it works, okay? And I don't know how you get tagged into a poll, but I've been reading the poll, okay? Cause it pops up that somebody's responded to it. And I would dare say, there's, there's, most people for, to start with, don't understand that the difference between a four and a five-day school day. Because let's be realistic, isn't it really a four and a half day school day if we go back to normal? Okay, so.
The truth, Bob, is the state won't approve us for a four-day week. What we know is a four-day week.
Let me, I'll get to that.
Yeah, it's a five.
I, I have, I have a question on that as well. So, if you have a four and a half, a four versus a four and a half, and you're reading this informal poll, just like the information that Alan's asking or anybody else that's asking, most people are saying that not much is happening on that half a day. Now, whether I agree or whether I disagree, that's what they're saying, okay? So, then we get into a discussion of what is planning time? What's planning time going to look like? In an elementary school, it's going to go back to what it was prior to the four-day school week, right? For 18 years, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, eight, 17, 18 years, every year was a battle about how do we increase elementary planning time? Now, I understand superintendent, the 990 and everything else. But in doing a little research, and, and I'm rusty at research, cause you know, it's hard to do while you're feeding cows or whatever you're doing, but, and I pulled this up. And I asked, I asked them to send this to me. On March 11th, they talked about the, the rule of the board. And the rule of the board actually was changing some of the intent, correct? In fact, and I, and I haven't, you know, that's a, that's a real sleeper there. I mean, that'll put you to sleep reading that, okay? But as I go down through that, they've scratched out 990 and they're only talking 180 days. So, how does that affect us now?
So, you have to get a waiver?
No, no.
If you're gonna do the regular four-day week?
No. They're, they're, they're talking.
They're still requiring you, you can't do four regular days. You have to have extended days on those four days.
You have to have four days, brick and mortar type, the way I understand it. You have to have four days, brick and mortar, in class, in person. The fifth day could be any educational plan or any educational, what is a service that you offer. That could be anything. They're not, they're not dictating what the educational service is.
I think we're, I think we're talking about two different things because we're going soon to the state board to ask for our four-day waiver for our four-day schools. A four-day week is, is different than, cause, cause we currently did a five-day week, even though we call it four and a half. Cause that day counted as a full day. But Mark, aren't we, aren't we required to, the last time we asked for the NEST schools to go, we got a white paper and Linda Hanks, or Linda, what's her last, Hanson, said, "We won't approve four-day weeks for your Valley schools, but we will, we'll consider it for NEST." Now, that might have changed, but.
All I know is in this thing that they, that they passed on March 11th.
Correct.
Which is still in a draft and it hasn't been published yet.
And it's, and it's receiving public input. It should go in effect May 24th, 21. It talks only 180 days. It does not talk the 990. And it doesn't talk about any waivers. This is a wide-open option.
Yeah, so, so the difference is for our Valley schools, Friday will, will be a, a school day of some source. For our NEST, yeah, for our NEST schools, Friday is an off day. And, and so that's why. Correct. And so, we have to do 150 days at our NEST schools. But the 990, you're right.
In the Valley schools, the 990 is not applicable.
Correct, yeah.
Add additional time to four-day school weeks to meet the 180 on the waiver and show them how we're gonna meet that equivalent 180, right?
No, we have to, we have to do 150 days. There is no hour requirement.
No, I didn't say 990. I said 180. The waiver is about 180 to 150.
Correct.
We're showing them the difference in the time and how we're making that up.
Correct, yes.
That's in the NEST, in the NEST.
That's for the NEST, the NEST schools, but not for the Valley schools, right?
I just, I, what I was trying to do is.
They, we can't call it a four-day week, cause it's really a five-day week. It's just that fifth day, how we, how we, otherwise we would have to extend those days.
And that, and that's my point. If, with this new board rule, it, your, your fifth day could be, it could be your tier two and tier three teaching, right? It could be interventions. It could be tutoring. It could be whatever you want to call that. And they will allow you to whatever, and I would imagine, Mark, it's a plan or whatever has to be submitted. But they, but they could, you could allow that to happen. It would still help achieve, and I, and I'm just saying, just throwing that out. There's still that possibility of small group or whatever, but it would achieve some of your planning time problems and those type of things, depending on how that was configured. Yeah, and it, and, and like I said, it's in draft form now, but. Okay, Rick, sorry.
It's okay. Just before, I'm up, I'm good. I've been sitting there for three hours through that first part. I need to stand up for a while anyway, so. Three and a half hours, but who's counting? You, all of you received a letter that I sent today. And the first thing I want to say is, and I hope everybody understood, cause I tried to make that clear in the first part of the paragraph, that was a letter from TEA leadership. It was not purporting to represent all teachers in the district or even all members of the association. This topic has jumped on us fairly quickly. So, we didn't have any time to really get out and to survey, you know, specifically what teachers would want. The second thing I would do, and I would echo a little bit of what Bob said and maybe kind of in a different way. I have written enough surveys, participated in enough surveys, asked enough questions. Depending on how you ask those questions or create those survey questions, you can really get the answers that you're seeking. And so, that's the other reason why when I started out that letter, I tried to point out that I don't think this is a four-day, five-day discussion. And we've already seen how quickly that can get confused and get into the weeds. And people think it's something that it isn't necessarily.
It's a, it's a five-day discussion.
Exactly. Exactly. And that's the question. So, what does the five-day discussion look like? Because that's where we're at. We've been on a five-day this year that's been modified, with the exception, of course, of our NEST schools, okay? So, here was what we have had, some of the preliminary feedback that we have heard from teachers. The first thing I want you to know is our teachers are anxious to be with students. And they understand the importance of being with students. And so, as we talked about Fridays and as we looked at Friday potential, we didn't look at a Friday digital day, and that's not what we've heard, as a primary way to do things. But the question became, what is that Friday and what does it look like? Is it a traditional Friday where we line up first period, go to class, second period, go to class, so on and so forth? Or would it be a situation where, as Bob mentioned, where we might get more bang for our buck by creating, and it's a little bit of what Chantel mentioned, where it's student-driven a little bit? Where students can come into the building and where they could control a little bit of where they go on Fridays and what they need and get the things that they needed done. And so, if they needed some individual or some small group work, they could get that. If they need to make up tests or retake tests, they could do that. If they needed help on assignments, they could do that. Now, if we want to get big and bold and really think outside the box, there are all kinds of things that we could do in terms of enhancement opportunities. We could help kids learn how to write. We could help kids learn how to write, es, or, um, what am I trying to say, resumes, okay? We talked about the fact that we have a lot of kids that feel stress and pressure right now. We could create some stress reduction. We could do some fun things, and just offer some activities for students. Again, what does Friday look like? That, that was the question, and that was the question that I tried to propose. Is that maybe we could think outside of the box. Now, just to throw out a few other ideas, of possibilities, okay?
Is Friday the best day?
Is Friday the best day? Because we have some people that say it's not, that Wednesday would be a better day. Because that puts it in the middle of the week, and that kind of takes that three day weekend that everybody's after out of it, and may make it more educationally oriented, okay? That's a possibility. You know, my belief is that what we can do with that is only limited by our own imagination and our own creativity. Now, Bob also mentioned a little bit, and I know some of the rest of you have talked about it. We have, Bob and I have been doing the TA thing for a long time, and as he said, elementary planning time, comes up all the time. Superintendent knows, a few years ago, we were able to get some additional specialists put into place, to try to help with elementary planning time. Fridays present, if we do them right, an opportunity not only for elementary schools to have, and keep that additional planning time, but for all teachers to have additional planning time. I'll just share with you something we did at Grantsville High School, and I thought it was tremendous. We took one of our PLCs a month when we met on Fridays, and we would use our own staff members, and we had about five or six different teachers that did some really phenomenal things with Canvas, and with NearPod, and with EdPuzzle, and some of those things out there. And we would have our own PD within our building. I just want to tell you, it was fantastic. Not only were the presentations great, not only were these, these folks experts in what they were teaching, but we as faculty groups sat and discussed about how we could implement those things, and what kinds of differences that would make. Now, this is now Rick Harrison speaking. My concern is if we go back to that more traditional Friday, that we lose some of these opportunities. And, as I, you know, tried to explain to you in the letter, I don't think in the last fifty years, we've changed our model of delivering education in a significant way. We have a few more classes, we have a little bit more technology, but it pretty much looks the same as it did. Well, I'll go at least, I'll go forty, forty a lot years back, I'd have to think of how old I am, okay? It hasn't changed significantly. And I think this is an opportunity, because I think things like pandemics and challenges, present opportunities to grow. Now, some of the things that we did, didn't work on Fridays. We would all be the first to admit that, but that doesn't mean they were failures. You know, is it, I think Edison that said, you know, when somebody asked him about failing to, to, uh, discovery, he said, "Well, that's just another way I figured out how that doesn't work." And we eventually get to the way it does work. I'll throw kudos out, not just because it's my wife sitting back here, but Grantsville High School and their special ed department did some phenomenal things on Fridays. They had Zoom meetings open from eight thirty AM until twelve thirty AM every day. They had individual breakout rooms, they had all the paras there from eight thirty to twelve thirty. And then the teachers, depending on what other meetings and things they had, they got into those rooms. They helped a bunch of kids. You know, I wouldn't on that Friday, say that maybe Zoom couldn't be part of it, because some kids, that may work better for them. It may be face to face that works better for them. But I, this again, is Rick Harrison thinking about this. I would say Friday, we run buses, and we feed lunch. And kids that need help, they come in, and if they want to set up a Zoom meeting, uh, Chantel mentioned Canvas. You can easily set a schedule on Canvas. Kids can sign up, you can schedule all that stuff on Canvas. Now, the other thing I would say, and then I'll take questions, or sit down, shut up, whatever works best. I don't think that this looks the same in a high school as it does in a junior high, as it does in an elementary. And I think sometimes that's where we make mistakes, is we think we gotta make that all look the same. And we're dealing with completely different clientele, with completely different needs. So, I would suggest, I'm more familiar with the, the secondary concepts, obviously, cause that's where I've spent my whole life. But I would suggest, we've got some fantastic elementary teachers. I will volunteer our TEA board member elementary teachers, and any others that we need. I think they could come up with some awesome things we could do at the elementary level. So, that's kind of where TEA leadership is coming from on this.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear, and I appreciate it, so, thank you.
That answer everybody? All right, you guys must want to go home, cause I know it wasn't that good.
Any more discussion on this, for now?
Well, the last thing I was gonna say, and I think it's consistent with most of what we've heard on this topic, but when I would have, when I've had parents or teachers tell me how much they've liked the, the digital Friday, I've said, "Well, the, the best thing that you can do to allow us to continue is to learn on Fridays, and not use it as a vacation day. Learn and teach, and not use it for your three day weekend, or whatever, so, anyway."
That's kind of hard to get to, you know, I mean-
No doubt.
It's a students, from a student's perspective, we definitely get that teachers enjoy learning, and they've used that to not only survive, but to learn and grow, and that's been a good thing. But, you know, what the, what the students are doing, we heard a lot of our SBOs say, "We work on Fridays." Which is not a bad thing, work based, you know, learning is obviously, you know, can be really beneficial.
Yeah, they're, they're the intern kids, yeah.
I, I would offer that we could work with Deb and, and Justin. Justin's got a pretty good sense of, without, without putting out a biased survey, but we could send a Qualtrics survey out to our staff. You know, whenever you do surveys, you also, you don't only look at the makeup of your survey, correct me? You guys with doctorate degrees, but you also look at the number of respondents you have versus non respondents, because you want to say, "Hey, this is pretty good response rate, and it's pretty," we can generalize that to the, you know, is it statistically, you know, significant either way, or are we gonna end up with a fifty fifty tie, and then, you know, okay, now what's gonna be the tiebreaker, so? But I, I think it's, on the next, we could have a survey out and back, hopefully by May, the May eleventh. We, you know, we certainly, after hearing where you guys are coming from, we certainly can provide you additional data.
And I just, yeah, sorry to keep talking about this, but I'm, when Scott's talking about, you know, we're not here just to respond to our patrons, and I agree with that completely. I mean, if we had ninety percent of our patrons say, "Hey, no more school, let's just all go do our thing." You know, I, I think it would be an abdication of our responsibility to the school board to say, "Yeah, let's go that way." But I do think it's another piece of information that's valuable to us as we assess the options, so.
Yes, there's a lot to think through.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Um, I just really like the idea that Rick brought up of, um, thinking outside the box. And I do wonder if maybe we need to get some more ideas out before we do send out a survey, so it's maybe a little bit more specific. And Alan, I, I talked to a lot of elementary teachers, and I do feel like there is kind of a variety, like, you know, some people love it, the four day, some people really feel like it's really important for those little ones to be back in school five days a week. And I, I just, I want to make sure I give those elementary teachers that voice, cause I think a lot of times they feel like everything's catered to secondary. And, um, so I, I want to make sure we're keeping them in mind, and like Rick said, it doesn't have to be the same all the way across the board. You know, we can find, hopefully find a balance where we can get them both, what they need.
And I, and I think there's gonna be a million opinions, and it's gonna be one of those things. I remember after the firestorm of deciding when, back in August or July, when we said, "Go to school." Man, it was stressful on, um, ev- everybody. Kids, students, teachers, school board, we make a decision, and it's, it's tricky. And, um, you know, we had, we had some teachers the other day approach us, a few of us, when we were at their school, and said, "You know, I'm a, I'm a mom, and so my kids don't get their schoolwork done on Friday, because my kids are home alone, and so guess when I'm doing their stuff, I'm doing theirs on Sunday." And it was elementary, well, no. This, that wasn't an elementary school, but then I've had some other letters come in and say, "Well, yeah, my kid's at the secondary level, and because I'm at school, I can't help them and motivate them to stay there." But I think, Rick, what you're saying, thinking outside of the box, and getting that, the, the thing is, we have to have expectations, and follow through with them on, you know, with our students, and our teachers, and our families. Cause changing is hard, and I don't, I don't think we're, it's, you know, it's just one of those things that it has to be well executed.
One of the things that I am concerned about, I like the ideas of being a little more creative with intervention and stuff on Friday. It doesn't have to look like the digital day. The, the one problem with the digital day, just like the, not the blended approach, but the, I can't remember, hybrid approach, is, is you have two classroom responsibilities. You actually double up and stress your teachers out, because you say, "Now you're doing four days of a face to face class, and oh, by the way, on Friday, you've got a digital class." So, I, I personally would be more in favor of looking at the intervention and those other creative out of the box, than, than also to just do what we've done this last year, because we were forced into remote learning, cause we know that's not cutting it either, so, you know. Nothing ventured, nothing gained, you gotta take some risks, but at the same time, you, you, you can't, you know, you can't stay in the status quo and, and make, and want to get better, so. I think you have to balance, I think, I think both are very valid.
Um, and I'm curious, oh, sorry.
Scott, go ahead for a second, and then Valerie.
Okay, I'm sorry. I get this delay, so I don't, I start talking over you, but I don't mean to, I, anyway. My, my one thought about survey is, if it's a survey, I think that would be good, but I don't, I, I, I think we've been referring to polls as surveys. And, and what I mean by that is, we post, you know, we put on the district website, a, a poll that says, "Vote how you want, you know, tell us what you think." And, and that's different than a scientifically designed survey that actually looks at and says, "We're sampling a very targeted group, a representative group, if you will, of, of folks." And I think that you get different answers depending on what that is. And I think too often, we've given a lot of credence to, to polls. It, it, it's the change.org kind of mentality, that those that are passionate about one way or the other, the word gets out, they get on the poll, they, you know, they advocate whatever. And, and I would suggest to you, there's a big difference between a poll on a website, and an actual survey that's scientifically designed, that says, "We are going to contact this defined population, and, and actually make a scientific survey out of it." And, so my caution is, or, or my ask is, that we don't do a poll, but rather that we do a survey, and, and if you're gonna do a survey, that requires more work than just throwing out a poll on, on the district website. And, and too often, a- as a board, what happens is, we don't go along with fifty one percent of the poll. And, we, we, we try to look at the whole, and, and, and too often, we're trying to govern by that popularity contest of a poll, and not by scientific data. So I, I would just ask that if we're going to do a, a survey, let's do a survey. But that survey doesn't look like a poll thrown on the district webpage, but it's actually, you know, a representative sample that's identified, and we actually send the survey to those individuals, and, and get that data back that way.
Yes, Valerie.
Uh, so I was just gonna say, I had the idea presented of, um, doing five days, but shortening each day. Is that something, um, as long as you, as long as you meet the required hours?
No, it's days.
Sorry, days, then you have that flexibility?
So like Alpine right now does, half day, five days. Well, they switched to doing something, but yeah, they do half days every day, twelve thirty or one thirty or something.
That's another way to look at building in prep time. I mean, you know, whether it's kids leaving early, or a little bit later start. I know that there are districts, and there's some research out there on starting later. But, you know, employees wouldn't start-
We already start fairly late with our high schools compared to-
But part, part, even at elementary, cause high schools don't need additional prep time. So if elementary came in, I don't know, thirty minutes or forty five, whatever, thirty minutes late a day, that cumulative change, I don't know, Becca, oh, Becca's not here, but she was talking about, you know, maybe that's thirty minutes a day as opposed to a Friday. Maybe that, our teachers would appreciate that more by at the element, at least, that could be an elementary solution, while the secondary one was different, they don't have to be the same, but she mentioned, well, couldn't we, instead of doing that on one day, couldn't we spread that prep time out, and start later for elementary?
Okay, so, um-
You that, we, it would, it might cost some money to do a scientific study. None of us have degrees in that, but there are some companies that can help us design that. I don't know if Qualtrics can help us design that. Justin's pretty good, but I agree with Scott. It needs to be more than just a popular, popular vote.
Well, and what we would need, to avoid it just being a poll, is some guidance in the questions that you would want, and then we can refine those questions and put them in the tool. But, for Justin to just try to come up with, you know, do you want a four?
Yeah, usually when you do a scientific survey, you've got, I mean, you're trying to disprove the null hypothesis.
What are you trying to find out?
What is our research question?
Yeah. What is it you want to find out from?
Schedule do you prefer, or are we trying to get to something else, and we'd have to figure that out?
A lot has been talked about it, you know, are you gonna give them options of?
I guess-
Would you like this, would you like that? No.
Yeah, no, I guess, I guess my feeling is on it, and I don't know, maybe I'm, I'm kind of speaking out for Alan. I just wanted to kind of know, cause like I, there's been some informal surveys or polls that have been done. And I know we're gonna get answers all across the board, and, you know, even to Bob's point, you're gonna get answers that, depending on how you read them, will say one thing versus the other. But it is also very interesting, because depending on, if you ask elementary teachers, high school teachers, Grantsville teachers, Stansberry, Twil- wherever you're at, it's a very different answer every time. And I just want to kind of see, just information, I guess, and it doesn't have to be anything really technical or a big deal. It's just more than just what's in my own little bubble, that I'm, I'm curious about. So, I appreciate Scott's perspective, but I don't think it needs to be, like, I don't think we need to go out and spend money and hire a company to do it, if we already have the program. Decision on it, I think Scott's gonna say the same thing I'm saying. Go, Scott.
No, I think you're saying exactly the same thing, is that if you're gonna base this decision on it, and if you're trying to find that information, then that information needs to be valid. And, and so often anymore, we confuse polls with surveys, and, a- a- and, at that point, you know, the, the better solution is, is to go out and talk to your constituents. Go find out if you want to, you know, whatever that looks like, talk to your kids' friends, what, or, or people at church, or, you know, the basketball game, or, you know, go, go hang out at the softball game and talk to people. Because, but so oftentimes, a, a group with an agenda gets on a poll, and, and says, "Hey, you've gotta vote here, and, and it's closing Thursday, and, and you see something happen." And then, then we're, the boards that comes back and says, "Well, seventy percent of the people said they want four day weeks." And then, we're saying, "Well, yeah, but it was," a- and then, as a board, the, the conversation turns, "Well, the board doesn't listen." Well, I, I mean, I, I would love to listen to data that, that is, doesn't have bias. And that's, I, I just think you're gonna induce a lot of bias, on something especially as emotional as a four day school day, or a four day school week.
Cody, Mr. Reitzel, yes, please.
So I think all we're talking about here is simply-
So I think all we're talking about here is simply including demographic information to ensure that we have a representative sample. So if you do that, then you're ensuring that you're getting information from a representative group of people. And I think that's what we're ultimately talking about, and as more that I'm hearing, that I think um, Mr. Bryan is talking about that idea of essentially making sure we're getting a representative sample, not a certain strain.
And could you just stay there for a second? Is, is that something that we can accomplish through Qualtrics?
Yeah, you just have to include the, the demographic information that you wanna include, such as gender, your location, where you live, school.
Status, teacher or student?
We do that every time, so.
So are we?
And can people only answer the survey once?
Typically, depending on how it goes. Maybe I'm picking the desk, but. Thank you. When a survey is sent out, you can set it up so that way an individual can only answer once from a certain computer or URL. So we often have people call and say, hey, I wanna take this multiple times. We'll tell them, I'm sorry, you can't do that. So we have those things in place. We, you have to put your name, your school, where you're located at, your, your gender, what grade you're in, all of those things are included. If we sent this out for a scientific survey, the last time we did that, it cost us about twenty thousand dollars. We went out for a bond and, um, no offense, but y'all did not listen to the data. So I would. Yeah. So I, we can do this free and make sure we have that demographic data added in.
Well, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't think, I don't think we're making the decisions solely based on what the answer is. I mean, let's just be honest, whatever decisions made, there's going to be people very happy with this, and there's going to be people really not so happy with this. And so I think it's a tool, it's just a tool of seeing where we're at. And, and with the demographics and everything included, I think that really helps you kinda look at what everybody's do, you know, where everybody's thoughts are coming in. So, anyway.
Um, yes, I, I, yes, to all of the above. I think, you know, if, if it does look like, anyways, we've just gotta have a plan.
We'll do our best job on a survey and get it back to you as soon as possible.
Okay.
Um, I would suggest that our last item, in the sake of time, that we table that. I, I will tell you that uh, I've invited Valerie and Bob and Julia to the meeting on the twentieth where we're gonna do our readiness review. Our strategic plan and our accreditation is underway, and I've given you some information. And May twentieth is the next date, and so you can read the information yourself and send me questions, and I'd be happy to present it.
Okay, that sounds like a great idea. I probably need a motion to move that, but, but do the DLI stuff? I think we need to discuss that tonight, don't we?
I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, I apologize.
So um, let's skip to three-point-five right now, and then. Do you wanna motion to extend our meeting since we're at curfew? Yes, we need a motion to extend for. Renee, is it you that is talking? Five, ten minutes? Just say fifteen, just to be safe, so it doesn't, we're not like. Just say. Thank you. All right, I motion to extend our work session by fifteen minutes to ten fifteen.
I just got a text from Mr. Mill saying, what is she talking about?
Motioned by Camille, seconded by Alan to extend the time by fifteen minutes. Thanks, you guys. Oh, all in fa, any discussion, all in favor? Aye. So.
Can I just preface by saying, I appreciate Renee coming up and having Brandy here? Uh, the, the question basically came up as Mark is um, looking at, Dr. Ernst, sorry, Mark is looking at um, boundaries, because we asked him to do that ahead of time, and the question came up, is there any interest in a dual-language program at Twenty Wells? And so I simply asked Renee to check with the, uh, the state, which we have uh, our employee, uh, Dr. Mao here, as well as she's a state coordinator for German and Russian and I don't know how many other languages. Anyway, and uh, and I think the second question is quite frankly, is now the right time to look at a gradual move from West for the German program to a larger school that would be able to accommodate four classrooms and not the problems we have at three? So it just kinda grew, and we thought the best thing to do is have Renee just review where we're at in DLI, what the challenges are, what the, um, some of the programs aren't full. Um, and so that, I asked Renee to, to kinda help give you a good idea about that. But really what we need is uh, to know whether or not you're interested in expanding uh, DLI.
Um, so just quickly, I think at this point, um, I do have one copy for Melissa. But you could share, uh, sorry, Alan. Those are the numbers since we've opened in two thousand fourteen. And you can see by school, we've grown quite a bit each year in the DLI program. Now, this last year, you can see that we've reduced a hundred or so, just in DLI. And um, those numbers are attributed to Blue Peak Online and homeschool. So in January, February, we sent out a survey to those homeschool and Blue Peak DLI parents and asked them what they think their plans are for fall. Um, just because we had some opportunities from the state to provide um, some software for them to continue learning. And at that time, half anticipate coming back. But January, February, I don't know how I would've answered as a parent. Now, I would have different answers. So um, Jen Athalie's gonna send another survey next week to just get a better idea of who's coming back. Because I know it's an issue like for Middle Canyon with Spanish. Um, their numbers, I think, are already like forty-four. And there's a lot coming back that they don't know are coming back yet. And so we wanna do that survey for them as well, so they know if five more kids are coming back, they need to save some spaces for kids that move from other Spanish programs in the state. And also heritage speakers, um, oh, yes, sorry. Um, and another concern I have is two of our programs are really low in enrollment for next year for first grade. Um, I've talked to those principals, they're trying to make some efforts, but I don't know if starting a new program is the answer. But Grantsville may feel differently, but their French program isn't full either, so.
I mean, I, 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 oh, sorry, Madam President, do you mind if I say something?
It's a work meeting.
I, I can't say to, unlike with the four-five-day week, I haven't had like in-depth discussions with Grantsville patrons. My initial instinct from the county-wide perspective was, you know, do we really need another DLI program?
Right, it's a great opportunity.
It is, but some of those numbers, um, and what you're talking about, I don't know, I guess from my perspective, um, and especially where French is not full. Yeah, there's, there's opportunities for those interested, um, anyway, so.
I worry, oh, sorry, can I talk? I worry about stretching it too thin. Um, I know that you have help hiring the foreign teachers and, but I do wonder, like, at what point we kinda hit capacity with getting them out here.
Yeah, I'm gonna let Brandy speak to that part.
On, on the hiring, um, when we added our DLI programs to begin with.
Speak into the mic.
I am so sorry. Um, when we started our DLI programs in two thousand fourteen, the district was at a point where we were hiring over a hundred new teachers a year. And I don't know where we're at now, but at that time, we had a lot of difficulties finding licensed teachers to fill our open spots.
We're at nine right now.
Right, so it's like a much different picture. So at that time, when we added the programs, they really helped us out. They attracted teachers to our district that we wouldn't normally attract. Um, the other thing just important to remember was when we opened our first five schools, we had a different um, scenario in mind than what we're talking about with Twenty Wells. So the first five schools were put into buildings that had vacancies because of the growth at the north end of the county. So we used those programs as a type of a magnet program to draw families and students from those, those over full classrooms into classrooms where we had space. And then um, we've add, since then, we added Anna Smith and Rose Springs and Overlake to our overall numbers. And we have kind of maintained a, an approach here in the district that if a parent wants the program, the option for their child, there is a spot. So it might not be in their home boundary school, but there is a spot. We have, I mean, we really don't even have a waiting list, even at Middle Canyon. So if we look at adding a program to Twenty Wells, it, we really should be something that's filled by students that are in boundary and not really have to rely on, well, there's only twenty-five families that want it, that might not fill a class of, of, or your cohort of fifty.
Okay, thank you. Brandy, can I ask you a question? So are you recommending that we add another program?
Um, no, I think that you should find out and see what the interest is. Um, for, Grantsville does typically have a waitlist. Um, I think the last two years have been a smaller number for kindergarten overall for the district, so that might be showing up in our data. But Grantsville um, has had sometimes a bigger waitlist than Middle Canyon because Grantsville families don't want to drive to Twilla. Whereas the Stansberry families, they've done more car pulls and have driven to Twilla. Um, but, but that's, that's what I would ask first, is if, if there is an interest within the boundary area of Twenty Wells first.
Which we're still formulating, but do we know, um, the other thing, and I don't know if the data supports this, um, where interest in the DLI is language-dependent? Meaning, if you're offering this language, yes, I'm very interested. If you're offering that language, I'm gonna pass?
Uh, you know, I don't know. I think that there are more variables that impact that. Um, when, when you look at outside of Twilla County, you know, for example, Chinese has waitlists that are an arm.
Oh, that's what I was gonna say. Chi, I would've meant Chinese, Spanish, maybe.
But our Chinese program doesn't, doesn't have that.
Not the interest?
No, and it's, it's.
Interesting.
Yeah, it is interesting, and I think part of that is because of where we chose to put the schools, or the programs, which schools we chose.
Yeah.
Which I do think that um, there was a lot of really valuable, um, and um, like, understanding of equitable access for families, because those tend to be our families that wouldn't necessarily have the ability to drive their child to a school out of boundary. So um, I don't know if I answered your question.
No, that, I mean, that's helpful. I was just saying, you know, if your recommendation is to try and figure out how in-boundary families feel about it, I know when I've had conversations with people about DLI, it has sometimes, well, if it's X language, then yeah, I'd be very interested, and if it's Y language, I'm gonna pass and.
Well, that's another thing too, that some districts look at. They look at their areas and where the schools feed. So like, we already have French in Grantsville, then maybe adding another French program because we already have the secondary path set up for it. As opposed to adding a brand-new language, which would mean a whole new set of secondary, like, pipeline for that. That's, that's some districts' approach. Um, other districts provide busing, so.
In all fairness, nobody has six languages.
Right.
Across the state, so I mean, we've, what, what, what would your thinking be about West? Is there any data that suggests that the smaller schools, just smaller in size, that don't have the student population, or struggling more to fill those? I mean, I know it would be not maybe a pleasant thing. I think uh, you, you, you've got kids, Camille, in the German program, but we would still offer the German program. It wouldn't be that we would upper those kids, but we would just maybe put it at a school that had a larger population to draw from. But I don't know if you've had, had a chance to think about that, or?
I do think that programs in small schools, regardless of the program, struggle if there's not transportation provided. Um, so we look at Salt Lake City schools, they have a, um, like a gifted and talented program, magnet school, but they provide busing. So it's at a small building, but they bus from all over the district to that one building. So then they fill it, but had they not provided the busing, maybe it wouldn't fill.
Also, I think with that aspect, and I know Camille's run into it, and I have too, um, with, and my kids are in DLI. The impression was, if we took our kids into Stansberry, or into Twilla, or, you know, we would be able to go to our local junior high and high school. And that had to change, for whatever reason, I can't remember why.
Well, I think it might've been a perception.
It could've been. I mean, I was there. I, that, that was before I was on the board, I went to this meeting, oh, yeah, your kids can totally still go to whatever, and um, and yeah, for the Spanish, it worked out, but not for the German and Chinese. And there's lots of Stansberry families that are like, my kids play sports here in Stansberry and they wanna stay, or they do this, and they don't, you know what I mean? So um, anyways, that's probably another can of worms.
Melissa, I think that's one of the real problems we, we need to be conscientious of, and I think Brandy hit one nail on the head, which is, it's that after elementary school problem.
Yes.
And, you know, where those, where you mentioned that some districts say, you know, okay, those feeder schools are all going to have this language. Because once you get to that secondary level, it, it becomes a problem. And particularly, I, I'm thinking in Grantsville, and maybe it's not, and Grantsville's growing, and so maybe that doesn't become an issue, but, you know, a smaller school to sustain more, you know, that program through the secondary schools could be more problematic as well. So it, it's just another thought, or if we do another DLI in Twenty Wells, I think it needs to be the same language as what's already being offered in Grantsville, at a minimum.
Um, I, Renee also um, has the data for where we're at currently for next year's cohort, I have a second copy too. So um, Russian, Spanish, French, and Portuguese are, are pretty close to being full, but Chinese and, and German is not.
So I think we also need to remember, we're building a new high school, and that's gonna change where languages are going. We're gonna have to rework that as well.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions?
Um, the DLI stops after ninth grade, like ninth grade is the last grade, or what, how, I can't remember.
So the, the fifty-fifty-two teacher model is the elementary program. Cause we split the day, they do half the curriculum in each of the languages, and then in seventh and eighth grade.
There's two class periods.
Yes, one is a pre-AP class that preps them for that assessment.
Is that eighth grade?
At the end of ninth grade, they have the option to take the AP test.
But the pre-AP class?
Is seventh and eighth grade.
Oh, it's seventh and eighth grade?
And ninth grade.
Okay.
And then there's the culture, history, and media class that is um, offered in semester modules, and there's four semesters. So at the, at the point of passing the AP exam, or the Newell exam in the case of Portuguese and Russian, it creates, or opens the opportunity for the bridge course, the bridge program. And I can um, send out a link to the board so you can look at those. But that is a course that offers three thousand level credit to students, and it's co-taught by a university professor and a high school teacher.
So is that kinda like a distance ed?
Yeah, it's, it's a bit different because it's degree-earning credit. So our, our concurrent enrollment classes are like one thousand level classes typically. So these are three thousand level, which are junior-level courses. So it's a really unique opportunity. There's no other place in the country that's doing that.
So if they pass the AP test and then take three thousand level classes, the idea is they can get, have a minor in their language by the time they graduate.
Yeah, they're, they're about two classes short of a minor at the end of their high school career.
Got it.
And it's not quite distance learning. A professor does come physically to the school, not every day.
Yeah.
But they're partnering with that other teacher, so they are having that instruction delivered to them at that level.
Got it. So that starts like in tenth grade, depending on when they pass the AP?
There's three courses that are an option, and they're specially designed for sixteen-year-old kids that are, that are speaking Spanish in high school. So they're not a junior-level course that's offered at the university. They're particularly um, designed with a high school learner in mind.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Madam President, Brandy, would it be fair to say that there's really no, I mean, there's really no rush to put an additional program into Twenty Wells? We just wanted to know what your intent was. I mean, certainly if, once we get the school built and boundaries are changed, whatever, if that group of parents from within their boundary says, you know, we really wanna offer this, then we can always add it at that point. It's, there's not like a, a, a time. Is that correct?
Okay.
Right.
Okay. That's very helpful.
The other piece of data that I think is important to remember about Twilla County is when you look at our overall student demographic. The other piece of data that I think is important to remember about Tooele County is, when you look at our overall student demographics, and then you can look at the cohort that is in DLI, they're very similar. So we have a similar, it's not the exact same, but we have about, um, twelve percent of, um, our students have IEPs or five-oh-fours, or maybe just IEPs, um, and we have almost a similar profile in DLI. And with our English language learners, we have about a ninety-eight percent of our ELs are in a DLI program, which really shows that our district is making some really good efforts towards providing good opportunities for all of our students, not just, you know, ones that would normally take that chance.
You guys are awesome, thank you. Thank you, thank you, sorry, it's so late.
All right, can I make a motion really quick, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Can I, I motion that we move, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but the strategic-
Five, four.
Three-point-four.
Three-point-four to our May eleventh board meeting.
Second.
Moved by Camille, seconded by Alan to move item three-point-four to our May eleventh meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Clarification, I, I'm up for superintendent's report, so I don't have to prepare two reports, can I just make that the superintendent reports? You want two reports?
No, I'm kidding, I'm totally teasing.
For the love-
I want, I want half a report. I, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Alan, seconded by Camille to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would entertain a motion for a quarter of a report. Or frankly, no reporter.
No, I'm sorry, I was too tired, and I wasn't listening to what you guys were saying, so what is this? I can tell you why. I can tell you why. If, if you look, all their brothers and sisters that are at Tooele Junior, they're all Stansberry kids, and they're pulling in. They're all pulling in. Yeah. Amy, is that who you guys have been? Yeah, and she was talking, 'cause she car pulls, 'cause she still has her old, she has-